Let's call this meeting at the Willet City Council. It's an order. And we're going to start with a pledge of allegiance. I recognize everybody out there. Hi. Will you lead us, Chuck? In the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
All right.
So, Madam Mayor, as we before we proceed, staff recommends, knowing that we have almost a full house regarding item on your agenda, which is 9D. Staff would recommend that we amend the agenda to move that forward in the schedule.
I like that. Do we need a motion for that or do we just make that decision?
You can just make that decision.
All right. So, we're going to start out with public communications and then we will be moving up that item that so many people are here to speak on tonight. The City Council welcomes participation in its meetings. We have to do roll calls? Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, we do. And we have a roll call.
Councilmember Strong?
Here.
Rodriguez? Stransky?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mayor Connie?
Yes. And we are missing Councilwoman Rodriguez tonight, but she is in our thoughts. All right. So, public communications. The City Council welcomes participation in its meetings. Comments shall be limited to three minutes per person so that everyone has an opportunity to address the council. To expedite matters and avoid repetition, whenever any group of persons wishes to address the council on the same subject matter, the mayor may request the group appoint a spokesperson. This item is limited to matters under the jurisdiction of the City Council, which are not on the posted agenda. Public criticism of the City Council, commission, boards, and agencies will not be prohibited, and the City Council will take no action on these non-agendized items. Is there anyone here tonight who would like to speak to an item that is not on the agenda? All right. So, we will move on to public matters. The first item is an update from the Little Lake Fire Department. Shall we move 9A above 3 or should we go into the regular consent calendar items first?
I would say let's go through public matters and just get down to basically item 8, the city manager contact.
Okay.
So, just kind of do a slide.
Okay. Great. All right. So, the first public matter is an update from the Little Lake Fire District, and I understand that we do not have Chief here tonight. Am I correct?
No, I don't believe he's not. What?
Chief is currently on a training right now.
Training out of the community.
Okay. So, he did provide some written updates. Those are in the packet for anyone who is interested. They are available for the public to view. We also have a proclamation acknowledging Women's History Month. I have the honors to read that. We're jumping the gun a bit here since Women's History Month is actually celebrated in March. But here we go. Whereas in March 1983, the first Women's History Gala Celebration in Mendocino County was held in the Anderson Valley High School. Thereafter, each year, it has been held in the city of Ukiah with the March 5th celebration marking its 39th anniversary. And whereas the Mendocino Women's Political Coalition presents the Women's History Gala Celebration with AAW Ukiah. Whereas the aforementioned women's organizations continue to work to increase and acknowledge the roles of women at all levels of community and public service and to become knowledgeable about issues that affect their equality and to foster networks that extend and expand the creative social and political strength of women. And whereas promoting and celebrating the equality and achievements of all women continue to be at the core of this 2023 celebration of women's history and the tradition of the annual Women's History Gala Celebration is to recognize and honor particular women who exemplify each year's designated theme for contributions in their communities through their fields of work. And whereas on Sunday, March 5th, 2023, the public is invited to attend the 39th Annual Women's History Gala Celebration at 12:00 PM at the Saturday afternoon clubhouse. Women to be honored who embody this year's theme, celebrating the women who write our stories, are Ellen Reed, Dot Bravani, Sarah Reeve, Corinne Pierce, and Boffie Schmidt. And therefore, the Willet City Council does hereby join other communities in the nation in proclaiming the month of March to be Women's History Month and to recognize and celebrate the 39th anniversary of the Women's History Gala Celebration in Mendocino County on March 5th, 2023. Thank you. Delores, together, Delores. All right. We have no ordinances to enact this evening, so we'll move on to the consent calendar. The City Council considers matters listed under the consent calendar as routine. This council will take action with a single motion and call roll call vote. A council member may request the removal of an item from the consent calendar for separate discussion and subsequent action. The only item on our consent calendar tonight is the minutes from City Council, February 8th, 2023. Do any council members?
I'll move.
Thank you. Also, motion and a second. This is to approve the minutes from February 8th. Delores, may we have a roll call?
Councilmember Strong?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mayor Connie?
Yes. Monthly activity reports are matters that do not require action by the City Council but are of public interest. We have in our packet the Building Department Summer Report for January 2023. Anyone interested in knowing what's happening in the Building and Planning Department and what businesses are coming in are welcome to look at that report. Item 7, Commissions, Agencies, and Authorities. The Willet City Council meets concurrently as the City of Willet's Planning Commission and City of Willet's Assessor Agency. No items for us tonight on that item. Which moves us now to the City Manager Reports and Recommendations. And Brian, would you like to take it away?
Actually, no. I would I wanted to my recommendation is go to that 9D.
Okay. All right. So, we're going to move 9B instead of the City Manager Reports. We're going to go straight to the adoption. Oops. I'm looking at 9B.
D.
D. Informational discussion on general plan amendment, zoning amendment, and boundary line adjustment. And the presenting member this evening will be our Community Development Director, Dusty Dooley.
And there is a supporting PowerPoint as well. It's behind on the screen.
And I understand most of you all here tonight are to talk on this matter, so we will open it up for public comment after we get our report from Dusty.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council members. Dusty Dooley, your Community Development Director. And then, Delores, you could just go to slide 2 there real quickly. So, the matter in front of you tonight is informational item only. This is a request from San Adrian Timber Company to rezone approximately 20.5 acres of land that's currently zoned both community commercial C1 and heavy commercial C2 to heavy industrial, our MH zoning district. The purpose of the rezone request is to support the expansion of an existing log yard operation. There's also a corresponding general plan amendment as well as a boundary line adjustment to leave approximately 2.2 acres of land that will maintain the commercial zoning district for some future commercial use. So, again, 20.5 acres of these two properties are requesting to rezone to heavy industrial. 2.2 acres through a boundary line adjustment would remain in the C1, the community commercial zoning district. The 20.5 acres is comprised of two parcels. This includes what's commonly known as the old Quail Meadows property. This property, many years ago, supported a RV park campground. There really hasn't been any use of the property in some significant amount of time. The rezone also includes the next property to the north of the old Quail Meadows property, the old David Schwint property. This property continues to remain vacant. Both properties are located north of the high school and the existing log yard operation, east of Main Street and the Glen Green storage units there. Again, this matter has been noticed as an informational item only, so this is an opportunity to discuss the project, ask questions, seek clarification, provide guidance, ideas, any concerns that you might have. The next step would be to complete environmental review under SEQA and to actually bring this matter and notice it for potential approval by the counselor or consideration for approval. So, again, no decisions are being made tonight. This is an informational discussion item for all of us. You have a staff report with the exhibits. You have a number of letters that have come in primarily today and yesterday from the public. There was one exhibit that just got passed out to you. This just was an error on my part. This is just a general plan map showing the existing general plan designations for the subject properties as well as the proposed general plan designations. This essentially mirrors the zoning map that you have. So, this would replace the third attachment in the staff report or attachment C. Happy to introduce to the council tonight Leilani Shine. She's our contract planner. Leilani, another talent all the way from Brook Trails. I became aware of Leilani and got to meet her at the state conference down in Southern California this year and have been glad to get the support of the city manager to bring her on board. She's been the main staff person that's been handling this matter. She prepared a PowerPoint for us tonight, and she's going to come up here in a second and give a project overview for you. We also have the applicants and their representatives here tonight, Mayor, and they may also wish to speak to their project. So, with that, Leilani will come up here and share some information with you.
Thank you, Director Dusty. Good evening, council. Leilani Shine, contract planner for the city of Willets. I can get started. As far as the location, the project site is located in the city of Willets on the east side of North Main Street, approximately 615 feet north of the intersection with Castile Lane. The address for the project site is 23701 North Main Street. The assessor parcel map is book number 108, page number 040, Parcels 1118. I'll refer to them as Parcels 1118 throughout the presentation. Next slide, please. So, in the past, other applications associated with the project site have been approved. The staff report has a comprehensive list of past applications and approvals. In 2020, pre-application number PAC-20-01 was submitted for parcel number 11, which is also known as Quail Meadows, and that was to expand the existing log yard. And subsequently, a zone change, ZC21-01, and general plan amendment, GPA210, and applications were submitted in 2021 and withdrawn in 2022. Those applications did not include parcel number 18 as shown in the submission tonight. Other applications submitted and withdrawn in the past for the project site include zone change, ZC17-02, and general plan amendment, GPA17-02, which were submitted in 2017. Those applications proposed a change from commercial to residential zoning and land use designations to create a 45-lot subdivision. Again, those were withdrawn. Next slide, please. So, part of this project includes a general plan map amendment, which would amend the general plan land use designation from commercial general CG to industrial general MG for two parcels, 11, which is currently 10.62 acres, and parcel 18, which is currently 12.1 acres. The general plan application would amend 20.5 acres from the existing commercial general CG land use designation to be within the industrial general MG land use designation. A portion of parcel 18 will be adjusted to become 2.2 acres, and that 2.2 acre section will maintain the existing commercial general land use designation. That's the handout that Dusty provided earlier. Next slide, please. The zoning map amendment proposes to change the existing zoning designations for two parcels. That's parcel 1118. The zoning designation for 11 is currently heavy commercial, C2, and is proposed to be heavy industrial, MH. The zoning designation for parcel 18 is currently community commercial, C1, and is proposed to be heavy industrial, MH. A total of 20.5 acres will be amended on the city zoning map to be within the heavy industrial zone, and a portion of parcel 18 that's adjusted to 2.2 acres will maintain a commercial C1 zoning designation. That's attachment B in the staff report. Next slide, please. So, the project description. Overall, there's two main goals for this project. The first goal is to expand the existing log yard operation by 20.5 acres. The existing log yard contains approximately 12 log decks that are a maximum of 300 feet wide and 500 feet long, a total of approximately 150,000 square feet per deck with 20-foot deck heights. The second goal is to maintain 2.2 acres of the project site with the commercial land use and zoning designations while still allowing non-truck or automotive traffic associated with the expanded log yard to pass through that portion of the parcel. Next slide, please. The proposed log yard expansion would include new log storage, new water storage, truck parking, and the use of an existing office to support the proposed operation. Associated development would include 12 new log decks, multiple onsite access roads and drainage ditches, installing three fire hydrants, four water tanks that are 10,000 gallons per tank, and two new ponds, one that's 1 million and one that's 500,000 gallons to be used for irrigation and fire suppression. An existing 18-unit storage structure and unmaintained tennis courts would be removed to increase the available water in log storage area, and new log decks will also be approximately 150,000 square feet per deck, 30 feet in height. Vegetation removal and grading activities will facilitate the construction of rocked log storage areas, internal access roads, ponds, and parking areas. Internal gravel access roads will be maintained, upgraded, and/or constructed to connect the existing log yard to the proposed project site. A recirculating log irrigation system will be used to wet the log decks. A series of new return ditches will collect and transport the water back to the storage ponds. There are existing four wells, which would be plumbed to the new storage ponds. The water usage from those wells is anticipated to be up to 80,000 gallons per day between July to October, and approximately 40,000 gallons per day during May, June, and November. The total annual water usage will be around 41.5 acre feet or 13.5 million gallons. Daily operations will be consistent with the existing log yard operation, including log transport to and from the site, log remanufacturing, loading of bark byproducts, lumber trailer staging, and site maintenance. During peak delivery periods, a maximum of 65 to 70 incoming trucks per day are anticipated. The hours of operation for the existing log yard are dependent on the time of year. Hours of operation will range typically from 6:00 AM to 5:00 PM with occasional peak delivery times from 5:30 AM to 7:00 PM. Next slide, please. For public noticing, the staff report provides a comprehensive list of referral agencies that the city is currently waiting to hear from or has already received comments from. Additional comments are anticipated to be received prior to scheduling a hearing date. The city has received one referral comment letter from the Mendocino Department of Transportation that's dated December 5th, 2022. This letter requested that a condition be added to the project approval that requires the lumber company to obtain an encroachment permit for a commercial driveway approach at any access points. A total of 29 letters were mailed to 36 parcels to provide additional public notice for today's meeting, and as of today, we've received 44 public comment letters that are in support of the project. Next slide, please. At this time, staff recommends no action. This item has been noticed as an informational item only, and no action may be taken to approve or deny at this time. This concludes my presentation. I'm happy to try to answer any questions. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Any council members have any questions?
Yeah. As part of the SEQA work that'll be done later, would that include any sort of traffic or fire suppression issues to be kind of honed down during that? Is that what'll happen in the SEQA?
Yeah, that would need to be addressed during SEQA. Traffic study was submitted by the applicant as well, but the full SEQA analysis that includes that hasn't been completed yet. But it would be included, yes.
Larry Henge, either of you have questions?
I do not, no.
Okay.
Because I just wanted to clarify, the water usage.
Sure.
Is that all going to be from the onsite groundwater wells there?
Correct. The wells would be plumbed to the ponds, and then the ponds would provide that water use.
And that would be part of the SEQA analysis as well?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
So, I understand that at the north end of town, we have significantly less water pressure since it's further away from our reservoirs.
Sure.
But because they'd be using wells, they wouldn't have to be concerned about lack of pressure for water for fire suppression. Is that correct?
I think that's the intended goal behind this, but I think that might be more from public works side to also analyze, and so that would be something we would have to look at too as part of the SEQA analysis.
Yeah, just to speak to that, too. Yeah, you know, the fire department's not here tonight, but obviously, that's a big component that we're going to be looking for as part of a recommendation to council if we ultimately, you know, bring this matter back for a decision. Yeah, availability of water as well as water pressure on that side as it relates to fire suppression is a major concern, and so we're going to be looking for the applicants to present a very, you know, dialed-in, detailed plan that will be reviewed and approved by, you know, the city and the fire department. That would be, you know, adequate to meet, you know, the fire suppression needs and deal with the potential hazard that this operation would present.
Thank you. All right. I'd like to open it up to the public, and it's like, I know we're going to have a number of people, so please just keep in mind that this is informational only tonight. There will be no vote taken. There will be no decision made, but we do want to hear from all of you who would like to speak. Please identify yourself for the record.
My name is Dee Sanders. I'm vice president of the Schrebar Group Lumber Mills. So, Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council and staff, I'm just here to share a little background of the company with you just for a few minutes. Kevin, who's working for us, will share some more after that. So, I'm vice president of the operation. I've worked for the company since 1979. We have three sawmills, one in Eureka, Schrebar Lumber Company, one in North Fork, which has been running for the last six years, and Purnet River Lumber Company in Weaverville, California. We also have a power plant in Anderson, about 50 megawatt plant. So, we've grown over the last few years. Schrebar's been around since the early 70s. Lots of ties to Willets in history. I have lots of ties to Willets from my past work history by going back to the late 60s. So, we've ran a log yard in Oroville, California for the last 30 years, which I helped get start many years ago. So, it's part of the way we've operated and the way we've provided logs as transportation has become more difficult. It hasn't just been in the last few years. It's always been difficult. People it's hard to haul logs along ways as we've mismanaged our national forest in the last 40 years. I've watched the destruction of that, and moving timber products, logs, to our sawmills has become more difficult. Our Weaverville mill sits in the middle of about a county that's about 80% federally owned, and we see very little timber come off of it to support the mill. So, we've had to go outside in a big circle to make that support that. And the way things have happened in the last few years, we've had to do the same thing with our Eureka Mill and also with our new mill at North Fork. These are primarily dug for mills. We have a sound reputation as a company, being very involved in our communities, doing a good job, not only for our employees but also for the community, being very involved. We're not taking this Willet's operation as, you know, we've started this operation in 2017 by leasing the Padula Log Yard here just north of the high school. We've looked at expanding that log yard by buying those parcels to the north, so that's why we're in the middle of this process. We've put a lot of effort into this. We've already drilled the four wells on the properties. We've also put in here recently four 10,000 gallon water tanks. We've plumbed and tried to develop a water system there. We understand the city's lack of water, and we do not want to put a demand on that system. We have been using it in the last few years with a it's not a sprinkler system but a mist system on our logs. So, we're trying to move forward with that in a proactive manner. We've also remodeled the existing office structure there on the Oakwell Meadows property. Just spent about $170,000 on that. Spent $100,000 on our water system and so forth. Our plan is to hope to be in Willet's for a long time. Mendocino County, being very familiar here for most of my career, is growing a lot of timber, and if you look at our mismanagement of resources in the last 40 years and the fires we've experienced, especially in the last six years, you know, we need desperately to do more management on all of our ground, not just for timber, but we need to do it for water, wildlife, fisheries, recreation, and timber. So, I'm just here to update you on that, where we're coming from, what our hopes is to do. We have a lot of landowners out there that are selling dug-for logs, some of them after they've sold their redwood logs. Some of them are primarily dug for species that we've created another log market for them here. We're moving that product back to our mills, mostly on lumber trucks.
I'm sorry, Mr. Sanders, your three minutes is up.
Okay. Thank you for the time.
Thank you very much. I will remind everyone tonight, you've got three minutes, so it goes by quickly. Keep it going by yourself.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name's Kevin Dobell. I'm the consultant that prepared the application materials for the North Fork Lumber Company and San Adrian Timber. I just want to let you know, we're here to get your feedback. We're here to hear your comments. We're here to take notes, try to bring back answers, try to actually build answers into our application. Hopefully, through the discussion and the feedback we get from you tonight, we'll be able to prepare a better application as we move forward. In addition to the materials that you got in your staff report, some of them very technical, there was just one item I wanted to touch on tonight in brief remark that's just related to the fact that this project is centrally located. It's a key component to the fire resiliency cycle that we're going through in California. I provided a map for you, which basically is a map of the state responsibility hazard zones from Mendocino County, and what you'll see on that map is the pink area. It's a very large area of the county, over 800,000 acres of very high hazard zone. That's the pink area. And the high hazard zone area is in orange. It's over 730,000 acres. Both of these zones encumber a significant amount of rural residential parcels within the county. As the state ramps up its efforts to reduce fuel loading in these areas, the demand for an efficient place to store timber before it goes in the market has grown. With many homeowners in our communities not being able to obtain fire insurance coverage, the state has implemented several incentives to encourage landlords to reduce fuels and try to regain and obtain that insurance coverage in these rural residential areas. The proposed log yard provides the ability to close the loop on this cycle by providing a centrally located facility. North Fork purchases timber each year from forest management projects such as the one I referred to. Forest prevention exemptions. These programs are intended to create greater spacing and reduce fuel ladder issues. A healthier stand of trees, larger diameter, thicker bark, and a heavier canopy lead to a more resilient forest and more resilient lands around structures. Structure protection exemptions. These are programs that allow homeowners to remove these trees within 150 to 300 feet of approved single-family dwellings or structures for the same reasons. Fire prevention is extremely important to the state. Resiliency is important to the state. The issue is the loop isn't closed yet. There's not enough places to take these logs so they can actually be put out into the market. So, what ends up happening is when these programs take place, the logs either sit there or they get taken to someone's property and they sit there. They're not taken and reutilized the way that they should be. Additionally, North Fork Lumber purchases post-fire emergency logs. Oh.
You got the beep.
I got the beep. Oh.
Sorry.
I'm sorry. I didn't realize as the applicant we had a little bit more time.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's pretty common that we would afford the applicant a little more time.
And how much time can we extend to him so that we can all be clear and he won't rush?
I think that's your call, but I would say, you know, we want to be able to hear from them. We want them to be able to describe their program and for the public to ask questions. So.
Yeah, we're obviously aware that you have a busy night. I can wrap this up in one minute. We didn't prepare an elaborate presentation for you tonight, but.
Don't rush yourself, but.
Thank you. Great. I just wanted to touch on the fact that the operation of the facility. You know, there have been some issues in the past with that property. I know that we've heard from staff that there were some issues with it. A lot of those have to do with the transition of ownership in 2017. A lot of those have to do with the transition of ownership in 2017. When you're coming into taking over an existing operation, there are challenges to bring it up to the higher standard in which North Fork operates under. I will tell you that North Fork and the applicants have met with Chief Carter. They're preparing a detailed management plan, an emergency operation plan. We're also working on a pretty sophisticated water runoff control and capture system, which would minimize the amount of groundwater that would need to be used to operate the facility. And to conclude, I just wanted to thank you for your opportunity to give us feedback. We're going to be taking notes. We may not be able to answer all your questions tonight, but we'll try to do that when we return. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak to this issue? Sure, there must be someone.
Good evening. I'm Todd McMahon, I'm the owner of NCRM, a local environmental consulting company. Done a lot of work for the city in the past, so this is the first time I've stood before you. I've been a resident of the Willets Valley for 27 years. We have about 40 employees, many of them live in Willets, and I'm here to offer my support of the expansion of the log yard for many of the reasons that the previous gentleman talked about. I think the opportunity to provide an outlet for the fuels that we have in our county are really important. I think the opportunity to have competition, right now we really only have two places that we can deliver logs and if North Fork wasn't there, we'd really only have one. I'd like to remind the city that four years ago, I stood in front of you with proposals from two mills when the Willets watershed burned and we were able to take advantage of that competition and get good prices at that time, which helped the restoration of the watershed and that's really important. And I think the economic upsides of the log yard sort of speak for themselves, so thank you very much.
Todd, can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
When we did our timber harvest up there at the watershed, we sent our logs to Eureka, is that correct?
No, we, well, actually, we, Schmidmauer at the time it was at North Fork bid on their logs.
Okay.
Mendocino Forest Products actually was the winning bid at the time.
Okay.
What happens with log sales around here, a lot of the time is that early in the year when there's not a lot of logs, people will get decent prices and then market fluctuations, mills fill up, they don't have any room. That's the biggest problem that both Mendocino Forest Products and North Fork have, is at a certain part of the year, their log yards fill up and they don't take anymore. And so the landowners that I represent don't have a place to take these logs, so instead we do nothing and that wood sits out in the woods and that fuel sits out there.
Okay.
So I think it's a really important project and I support it. Thanks, sir.
Thank you. And I know you didn't really want to come tonight and I kind of roped you in, so thank you. All right. Would anybody else like to talk this evening? Jane?
Well, I'm certainly not a logger. However, I am a proponent of business in Willets and I do have a dear friend that's husband is a logger in this area and I think that we need to, the whole city of Willets needs to look at having, expanding opportunities for people to have jobs here. So if we can make this a sustainable thing, I think it's really a good idea, just as a person that lives here and sees people that need to have jobs and keep our economy sustainable. Otherwise, we can't keep young people here, you can't have a town without young people.
Dolores, did you get her name? No need to identify yourself, sir.
Bruce Burton. And I just wanted to come and address a couple of points that maybe I haven't been, well, first off, I've been doing business with Schmidt Bowers for, I don't know how long, years and years and years as, and the family has deep roots in the Willets Valley. If you don't know it, you should find out about it because they've been here forever. And you don't often get, I don't think you often get this kind of quality of an applicant to come do business in your community. And it'd be wise to take advantage of it because it's, they just don't come along every day. And there's other options for them and it'd be a great opportunity for the city. For the landowners, you know, one thing I always like to talk about in timber is that it brings wealth to your community. It not just, doesn't just bring money. There's a difference between money and wealth and resources create wealth. And so when they saw logs from Mendocino County, or I saw logs from Mendocino County, we sell that lumber all over the state or all over the country. And that money comes from, that wealth is brought into the community. And being in this county that has close to a million acres of timberland, it far surpasses any other crop that we have to manage. And having a local market for that is just extremely important and to have the quality of company to work with is a real opportunity. So I really encourage you. It's a minor change really for the north end of town. The yard's been there, it's been in Forest Products for a long time. I think it's just a great opportunity to step in and partner up with them and try and bring something to town.
Would anyone else like to voice an opinion on this? Yes? Yes. Please tell us your name.
Hello, I'm Madison Lawrence. My family has been selling our logs to North Fork Lumber Company for many generations. And to me, expanding the log yard is expanding our time. So expanding the log yard means that I know that when I am older, I will be able to sell my logs to North Fork and that they're open. They've been very nice with us and they're a big part of my life. Okay, have a good night.
Thank you very much. Future council member there, Jane.
Sure, maybe city management.
Would anyone else like to speak to this issue? If not, I'll bring it back up to the dais. I do want to say, we received a flood of letters, both yesterday and today. I think there was one not in support of the project, but the vast majority were in support of the project. So speaking for myself, I deeply appreciate hearing from all of those who took the time to write letters. There were some very good points made and I spoke to a couple of folks today who wrote letters and got further illuminated on this, so I do appreciate everyone's time in making sure that we understand fully what this project is and how it can benefit our community. Is there anything else council members would like to say tonight? Any questions that can help the applicants with their submission?
The only thing I have to say is, I'm very concerned about the water suppression for the fire. And so I think that that's something that we really need to know. We need to know that everything is going to work out correctly and that we have enough water. No matter what time it is, it's in May or in August or September or November, we need to know that there's enough water if anything would happen that we can put out the fires. And that's the main thing. And we have two objects in town, which has the dam as everybody knows, and then the new underground water system that we're putting in in the city. And so that'll be another one to help us. So with you guys coming up with another four wells and the way to put in the tanks and whatever that you need to do, that would be interesting for me and I want to talk to somebody that does that. Thank you. And the fire chief also, thank you.
I will say that I spoke to Chris Baldo today and he told me that we haven't had a log deck fire since 1954, 1955. He said that when they had it though, it was real, it was serious and you didn't want to mess around with that. So that is definitely a concern for the city. Log deck fires are something that nobody wants to see returned. So I'm with Larry, I would like to see a very clear plan on fire suppression. Appreciate the comments made that maybe some of the issues with our former fire chief might have been during a transitional period. So I think the more clear and more pointed that portion of the application is, the better we can all feel about moving forward.
Can I speak to that?
Yes, please.
Just want to let you know, council, that two of our logging managers did meet with Ray Marshall, actually on Friday, last Friday. And we're being diligent and trying to work with him to answer a lot of his questions.
Thank you. And I have spoken to Chief Carter and he indicated as much, so appreciate that. Yes?
I just had in the staff report about the number of logging trucks that would be involved in coming in and out. And the fact that the location is right there near the northern interchange is certainly advantageous to everyone so that most of that traffic would not affect our city streets in general. So, but that will be something that will be looked at in the sequel review is how that traffic will impact at least the northern part of town and also assuming that the interchange is adequate to handle that. But I just think traffic and water are probably my main issues that I would be looking at most of the time.
Thank you. Yeah, and I did want to point out that I've heard somebody, somebody said to me the other day, well, who cares? What's the problem seeing a logging truck on Main Street? There's no problem with seeing a logging truck now that the city of Willets owns Main Street and is responsible for the cost of pavement replacement. A fully loaded log truck is something that should make us all a little concerned about how we're going to pay for the road upkeep. So I agree with Madge that the location seems to be a good fit for keeping some of the biggest trucks off of our Main Street corridor that we have to pay for. Yes?
Again, I just want to echo the fire is the big issue I really saw and it looks like you're working on this. I don't discount any of the economic benefit. I grew up with logs all around me. I grew up on East San Francisco Street and my dad worked in the woods with the railroads. So I totally understand the value to the economy of your business and I saw some of the letters and some of you I've known for years that wrote those letters and again, it just came, to me, it's just going to come down to as you work through this with staff and the fire department to make sure that we have that. I don't know if I, I didn't see the letter with somebody against it, but I don't know if any of the local neighbors there, I mean, everybody was noticed and I would hope that if they have any issues, they bring it up with the city so we can mitigate those with staff and applicants. Oh, okay. So, so that's, oh, okay. So, but, and again, I just appreciate the project and I appreciate all the work and thought that's gone into it. Sounds like you wanted to.
Bruce just informed me that that log deck fire started from a TV burner.
We haven't had a TV burner in 40 years. More than we ever have.
Thank you. All right. Unless there's any further discussion, I think this is a good start. Anybody? Thank you all for being here, thank you for your time, thank you for all the letters, thank you for showing up, we appreciate it.
Thank you for coming in front of the meeting.
You're welcome to stay. Yeah, I think having you all waiting around kicking your heels while we did the.
You're more than welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. Oh, I know.
Yeah, I win sometimes.
Can you take a five-minute break here to get everyone a chance to?
Turn around?
You missed all the fun. Yeah. All right. We are going to reconvene here after our short break. For any that weren't here earlier, we did move item 9D up to accommodate the large group of people who were here to talk about that. So we will now return back to item 8, which is our city manager reports and recommendations. The first item is possible adoption of a resolution approving agreement with Mike Smith for a ground lease agreement at Ellis Field slash Willets Municipal Airport. Come in.
Thank you. So the applicant, Mike Smith, is in the audience here to answer any questions. As the council will acknowledge, basically, the request was presented to the council for consideration approximately a year ago. And the request consists of constructing, Mike Smith constructing a privately-owned hangar at the airport on public ground, just so this consists of a ground lease. A year ago, the council approved the request and that started a motion, the heavy lifting between Jim Lance, Kathy Moorhead, Dustin Dooley, trying to pull all the resources together with our consultant, Mieden Hunt, FAA, Caltrans, Mike Smith. And this has been the perfect example here where after nearly a year, we got the green light. Basically, FAA has said that the placement location is suitable and it complies with all aviation components to maintain safe, a safe facility at our airport. So what we are asking the council tonight is to agree to the ground lease as proposed. It has gone through a lot of wordsmithing, a lot of revisions, and to that extent, late today, there's also one correction that was made and Kathy, if you want to just.
Yes, it was brought up about the 12,000 gallon fuel tank that is in Mr. Smith's lease agreement. It's the last two items, 23 and 24. And I have spoken with him earlier this afternoon and we are going to remove those. He has no intention of putting in a tank. He buys his fuel from us and always has, so.
Until we get the pump up and running again.
Yeah. So we will be removing that from the agreement.
So there is no changes essentially from, there was site change in the location from what was originally proposed. what was originally proposed, and the reason for the change in the location was FAA requirements, and once again, was the safe operations at the airport. Staff recommends that council favorably approves the request and signs off on the ground lease.
And I just wanted to point out that the summary report indicates that the annual rent would be $620, but the actual rent as written in the contract would be $5, what was it, $560, $240, that correct?
Yes.
Okay, all right. That's what we're looking to. All right. Any council members have any questions? Mr. Smith, would you like to make a statement?
Not if you don't have any questions.
This is the first time in this whole process, Mike. You've been silent.
Well, this was a hard act to follow. It is, you know. I want to make a positive impact on the airport. I think that it'll really be a symbol of growth and development, and it'll inspire others to do the same. There hasn't been anything built there for decades. I think the '80s was the last time that we built a hangar at the Willets Airport. I spend the vast majority of my time there. That's what I do. That's who I am. I mean, I don't know how much, what I hear, I've got my commercial license in 1988. I've been making a living flying ever since. There's a whole bunch that's happened between then and now, but now I'm still a certified air carrier, meaning an air taxi service, which is mainly for the firefighting act. You have to have that to get a contract with the US Force Service, and an air attack and a recon ship and a point-to-point, whatever they need. But I also have to, this will be my 24th year of a contract with Mendocino County Cooperative Aerial Fire Patrol. So I spend six to seven hours a day, seven days a week during fire season, flying. I call it, it's a seasonal work, it's a full-time job. I'm also a mechanic, so during the off-season, I rebuild my own engines. I do all machine gun work and avionics and wiring and stuff. And during fire season, I spend long nights and early mornings getting the airplane ready to fly every day. It is a challenge to be able to fly an airplane seven days a week, you know, with all the required maintenance. And all the maintenance I want to do, it's my career up there, so I make sure and do all that, which means I spend a lot of time in the hangar. And after all this time, it would be really nice to have a hangar that's big, I can put all my airplanes in with a concrete floor, so that I can, you know, all that maintenance is in the hangar. And so I'm excited to be able to have a new stadium. I mean, this thing is going to be the most nicest building that airports are ever seen, that's for sure.
It's going to have an open house.
It's really going to be a beautiful building, and I can't wait to get going on it.
Great. Thank you so much.
A question for Jim. In reading the binding on successors, I take that if Mike sells or something happens down the road, whoever ends up with that hangar has to basically operate it in the same way that...
Good point. This is a 40-year lease, and of course, Mike, he's got a little long, long time.
Yeah, that's why I was asking.
But at some point in time, he may wish to assign it to somebody else, and the city would need to approve that assignment agreement. And that person who, the assetee, would take over for the remainder of the term and would be subject to the lease terms. If Mike were to become incapacitated, or should he die, his heirs may wish to carry on the lease. The lease would be binding on the heirs, but the city would need to approve them as a tenant, should that come about. So the tenant is not a corporation. Corporations have an indefinite term. Mike is an individual doing business as his company name. And so he's an individual entering into a 40-year lease. The lease is binding on his heirs and his successors.
Once again, this has been a year-long process, and a lot of it was just coordinating back with FAA on the approvals on the location. This demonstrates, once again, and if the council approves it, the commitment of this organization towards that airport and working with the FAA and Caltrans to make it a safe, efficient facility for all types of airplane operations, as well as you heard from Mike, how he serves the community in the greater northern California region with his fire spotting activities. We do have another proposal, and once again, the council approved conceptually, once again, at least a year ago, on the Reach Medical Air Ambulance Facility. We learned a few things in working with Mike and FAA on this project, and we're going to apply those lessons to the Reach hangar proposal.
Would any council member like to make a motion?
I would.
So move what?
Oh, sorry, approval of the contract.
With the change that Kathy suggested.
Okay, so we have a motion to adopt the accompanying resolution to approve a 40-year ground lease agreement with Hawkeye Aerial, Mr. Mike Smith, at Willets Municipal Airport. We have a second. Maybe we have a roll call, please. Councilmember Strong?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mayor Khan? Yes. Thank you so much. Thank you for your investment in our community.
And I might retire, too, at some point, but I won't go away from aviation. I'll still be aviation. I have multiple projects, restoration projects, and it'd be really nice, you know, having a, just a little, great little things. Thank you. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you for your patience with us. Thank you for your patience with us.
Okay, you're welcome.
With special attention to Kathy, because she carried this, so...
Hey, you know, the learning curve, there's been a learning curve all around, for sure, and hopefully Reach will benefit from some of that.
Train some young persons. She wants you to.
Yeah, that would be nice. I can't seem to watch you do what I do.
All right, so the next item is the potential to adopt a resolution to implement an athletic field use policy. Brian, would you like to introduce this?
Okay, thank you. This is a nice project to work on. It stems from both comments that we received, that I received from the council, that the council received from members of the public, as well as we recognize internally, and what I refer to internally as staff, we're in a great position where there's been a growth, an explosion of youth athletic programs in this community as well as the county. But there's very limited field capacity to support and host those type of programs. We've been so successful in accommodating these groups in the past that now we're looking at a situation where, in the past, where we didn't have a formalized policy to work with staff to guide organizations as they come forward, looking for field allocations. The time has been ripe for this, and this is what is presented to the council. We looked at several examples. We took, we picked and chose what was the best fit for this community and for the needs that we need to address. The policy does have some over-engineering capacity in it. If it's applied, will need to be modified a little bit as we roll it out and utilize it over the next year or two, as we reach out to the different organizations and the groups. But this is a staff recommendation that this is a great first attempt at putting together a policy and filling it void. There is no policy now. So there are scheduling conflicts that we have to navigate around, try to accommodate different user groups who have different needs, if you put it that way, on how they utilize the fields. And then on the backside of it is how the fields are maintained. That's our responsibility, but there's also, there's been occasions when there's been trash or other items left behind, restroom's not been maintained completely, or it's locked, and then we get access to by the general public late at night, and that puts a burden on to the homework crew, if they do their sweeps in the morning. That is the policy. There are, we can break it down into different components. One of the good things in here, there is a P schedule. That is something that has not been utilized in the past, and there's justification for it. It's not going to generate a lot of revenue for general fund park activity, park development, but it is a placeholder, and it acknowledges that these groups who would utilize these fields have some payment coming into the general fund that we can benefit from in maintaining the facilities.
So the million-dollar question, when you worked on putting this together, did you come up with more of off-field space?
We're looking at it. So another component of it is that this in the last month or so, we have started a planning assessment of the East Commercial Corridor from Main Street down to the city limit, and we have worked with Jim Lands, that we have received notice from Frontier Days about renegotiating their lease and bringing in one or two fields that are currently within their designated area to bring it into rotation for field usage. So if you look on the graphic that is associated with the plan that designates the different fields, there's a placeholder on the field that's in the fenced area on the south side of Commercial. That field may not come online this spring or early summer, but we're hoping to have something that ready to go made up this year or early next year. Rough calculations, basically, if we do gain access to that parcel, we can make some modifications to fence lines and to move or eliminate some vegetation and make that a full regulation-sized field. And that's what we really need, is a game-day field.
So is this all on Willets property that's leased out?
Yes. All the fields that are on or would be considered for allocation for usage is owned by the city and under the jurisdiction of this council.
But it's under jurisdiction of Frontier Days now?
Well, you have a lease, or you have an agreement with them, and they have approached us, basically asking for some remodification. They're asking for some consideration of favorable terms, and in exchange, we're asking for a use to show that field back. So it's a little give-and-takes and negotiation.
Yeah, I see. Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions from council before we open it up to public?
Just the only thing is, on those fees, in some cases, it's so minimal that it almost would be more bother to, you know, for the staff to say, "You have to pay us $5 or $7." I'm just wondering if that's been taken into account.
The consideration associated with the fees associated with this policy is basically the first step in the doorway. You know, like I said, it's not going to pay for itself. We ran the numbers. For it to pay for itself, the figures would be pretty astronomical, and that's not fair. But we just think there is, the consideration that if you, there is money exchanged for a service, that there's an expectation of what is being provided and any return, or expectation of use in compliance with policies and regulations.
I would be willing to consider slightly more fees, just to at least pay for the paperwork of paying a fee.
Keep in mind, though, that these are youth organizations that are...
Yes, I know. And I'm just saying, in some cases, it's nice not to have a fee, because then you can just say, "You have to fill the paper with cap, but you don't have to pay a fee." But if they're going to pay a fee, it seems like it should be at least $10 or $15. I'm okay with what you've recommended, because as you say, it's a first step, and we'll see how it goes.
I did want to point out that in the insurance liability portion...
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
You've got that. There's a little typo that will be corrected.
Yes.
Okay.
I just think that it's a first step, and we've lacked this for a long period of time, and it's been a guessing game for all the people that have been in the staff throughout the time and for a lot of years. And it's been a mix-up of people. It's just been, you know, people that have made a gentleman's agreement and never anything on paper, and I think this is a good step, getting everything done and to have it down in writing. And we'll learn from it and make it a better place to be. Thank you.
Let me just, before we turn it back to the public, I just want to make it very clear. It is the intent of myself and staff to accommodate all users. We would like to see those fields used from sunup to sundown. We want to maximize them. As long as we can maintain the quality of the field, we will do that. It's just, the problem is, we receive multiple requests, overlapping requests, and what this is doing is, is creating a policy for, I'm looking at, Dolores, the city clerk. When people come in, and it's not come first, come first served. We're going to receive them and then almost create like a spreadsheet, basically, okay, there's a block, there's a block, there's a block, and how are we going to accommodate? We just have to bring some order to a process that has been void of order for some time. And it worked in the past, because there wasn't the demand. Now we're facing the demand.
So would you say that if this is implemented, everyone isn't going to get everything they want, but everybody's going to get some of what they want?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Sounds like a good negotiation.
Yeah, I mean, you know, that's a great negotiation tactic, you know, basically underestimate what your expectations are and move forward. Because right now, we haven't been able to safely accommodate. There's been some confusion, and some groups have been misled, and groups overlapping each other. It's just not a good way to operate the fields.
We don't want bad feelings.
True.
We want everybody to have fun.
Yes.
Okay.
It's for the kids.
Yes. Would anyone from the public like to speak to this issue tonight? Please be sure to identify yourself for the record. Thank you.
That's so the people at home can actually hear you.
We know you.
Yes, yes, yeah. All right. Well, Madam Mayor, councilmembers, staff, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to share a few thoughts. My name is Ian Fitzpatrick. I'm the administrative director and coach for Mendocino County Soccer Academy. And I, too, appreciate the fact that this ordinance has been put together. I think it's been a long time coming, and it speaks to the larger issue of there is a lack of safe fields for our kids to play in this community. And as Mr. Bender had mentioned earlier as well, there is a large growth in the number of kids that are participating in youth sports, and thank God there is, considering the times that we live in. And there are some suggestions in the ordinance that I would like to, and revisions, that I would like to be considered. And I'm not sure how this would work. It sounds like this is kind of a starting point, and we would just like to be a part of the conversation. And if I can give a little bit of background just for a moment, just for context of who Mendocino County Soccer Academy is, we, MCSA, Mendocino County Soccer Academy, is celebrating our 10-year anniversary this year. It was started by a couple of college players who actually won a national championship in college, returned home to the area to start this club. The third founder is a Division, she was a Division I soccer player as well. So these are folks that have experience in what they're doing. And started 10 years ago in Ukiah, a Ukiah-based nonprofit. And in 2019, it was started, you know, maybe 40, 50, 60 kids the first year. And now, 10 years later, we serve close to 1,000 children throughout Mendocino County, including the coast, Ukiah, Willets, Kokolo, and Leightonville, including several hundred kids here in the Little Lake Valley on an annual basis. The program started here in Willets. I initiated the program in 2019, took what I learned from the folks in Ukiah, and started our program here. And we've had nothing but positive feedback and results. Our programs are divided into basically three different programs, if you want to look at it in the most simplistic manner, from a beginner, intermediate, advanced. So we have our grassroots program, which is for kids as young as three up to about 10. And these are programs that are six- to eight-week programs run by our professional staffs. There are no games. It's all focused on the kids falling in love with the sport and learning basics. And we really focus on the individual development at those stages. We take the pressure off the kids from wins and losses. That doesn't matter. We want them to fall in love with the game, learn some skills. And we have, like I said, six- to eight-week programs. We run three to four of those on an annual basis here in Willets. And our intermediate program is our developmental soccer league. I just have a few minutes.
So I think that what you would really like to address is the policy.
Yeah.
Is it policy, not an ordinance? Is it policy, not an ordinance? And so, maybe if you could take just a minute to point out particular items that you would like to see adapted in the policy, that would be most helpful.
So, can I, is that a conversation to have here or is it to have...
This is the time for that.
For that? Yeah, so there are specific things that, in there, such as being a Willets-based nonprofit that would receive priority for field usage. And I think on paper, that makes a lot of sense. You know, these are Willets fields. And, but the reality is, is that we have, all of the kids that are participating in the program, 95-plus percent are from Willets. And so, although the organization is based in Ukiah, the kids and all the coaches, myself and all of our staff are here in Willets. And so, that would be one adjustment I would like to have taken into account. Because again, at the end of the day, these are Willets kids that are being served. And there's also language in there about organizations being selective with their offerings. And we do have a program, as I was gonna get into, which is our select team program, our advanced level program, where we do, you know, kids have to try out and so forth for that. But we have, in the area, one team that practices, one selecting that practices in the community. So, would that mean that we would be excluded or lower priority because of that one program? When the reality is, out of 300 kids, let's say, that participate in our program, you know, 295, you know, 200-plus, 90 of them are based here. Would we be excluded from the priority list? That would be a concern that I would have. And there's a few other points in there. It's just that we haven't been involved in the conversation in developing the order of the policy. And we would just like to have a seat at the table as this is refined and put into play. And we, you know, we work with any organization in town. We have from Little League to the schools to the cheerleaders and we're happy to work with folks. We're not asking anybody to move. We just would like to be able to have access to the same fields that everybody else and all the children in the community have as well. And at this point, there's language in the policy that would exclude MCSA in that case.
Okay. Thank you. Can I ask a quick clarifying question, Brian?
Yes.
When you were constructing this policy, did you think of MCSA as a non-Willets organization?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Okay. In my mind, I wouldn't have made that distinction, so I just, okay.
Like I said, we can tweak this. And, you know, the goal here is not to exclude. It is just to accommodate. It's like trying to land jets at O'Hare on the day before Thanksgiving. We have them stacked.
It's that intense.
It's that intense. Believe it or not. And the other problem we have as a city, we don't have a rec program. We don't have a Parks and Rec director. We don't run our own athletic leagues. So, we're kind of, we're the host, but we're also trying to accommodate other groups. And other groups have different schedules, different programs, different hours. So, it's trying to fit all this seamlessly into a policy that we can manage and also that groups understand what their expectations are from the city.
Hello. Andrew Hosford here representing the Willets Redwood Little League. I'm the president, but I refer to myself as on behalf of the board because I don't do this by myself. We have a whole team of volunteers that help put these programs on. The thing with youth organizations, as you guys understand, or at least as I understand, is that it's, you know, there's a lot of work that goes into it and many people don't see that type of effort. And the clarity, I think, that this policy could provide, I think, is warranted and needed. This is something that was brought to our attention, I'm gonna say sometime in the fall of last year, that the city had an interest in doing something like this. And I've been a strong, or I've been asking for a meeting, a public meeting, to discuss, you know, this exact policy so we could have some input. Particularly because we are one of the main organizations that are using it that would fall under this for the spring season and haven't been able to do so. And so, I think that this is a good start. There's a number of things in here that, well, I got this, I got the agenda on Friday and so, we've had very few, a small amount of time to review it and get input. We had a board meeting right before this. Couple of things I want to point out. There's some of the things I think we need more clarity on and understanding, how priority works, how, what the city's maintenance department, or Parks and Rec, excuse me, is integrates with this policy and what, you know, this has a lot of information about what our responsibility is, but it doesn't really say much about what the city's responsibility is when we're under this agreement during those time periods. If the field needs specific maintenance, that type of stuff, funding aspect of it, you know, we raise money, we charge fees to the students and then we raise money with concessions and other fundraises that we do. And we invest into the grounds as much as we see fit. It'd be great to be on the same page with the maintenance department about what improvements need to be done and who's gonna pay for them. And I think that the policy could probably clarify that a little bit of what the responsibility is. The insurance liability, we get our insurance through the Little League. It's a national organization. We're one division of it. We've been in business since 1952. I've had the opportunity to help out for the past three years of it. And, but the insurance, it doesn't align with the current insurance policy that we get from them. And so, we'd have to have an additional policy in place for that. And so, I'd like to have some comment on revising that a little bit. And then, some of the rules that have been put in with this, I think, need a little bit of clarity. I think a meeting and sitting down and talking about the specific points and going through it would be really helpful. I'd like that meeting to be calm and cordial. And I could, I know that Willets Redwood Little League would certainly do that, but I think that that's what needs to happen to finalize this. My recommendation would be to not approve it currently. And we'd appreciate having an opportunity to have a say in some of these things because I frankly can't get through all of it in three minutes, so. So, I don't, I appreciate you guys not approving it right now and then having some suggestive revisions and ultimately looking at it later on. We'll see.
So, I understand that, you know, time is of the essence. We'd like to have a policy in place before we get into the seasons this year. Is it doable to create a meeting where appropriate parties would be able to weigh in on some of the tweaking details? Or is that something that you feel is not accommodatable at this moment?
Well, anything's accommodating. And that's what, you know, my opening comments were that this is our first attempt. We may not have it perfect. Yeah, I mean, I don't know their expectations of the timeframe for meetings. We would like to have a policy at least in place before soccer season starts.
Which starts?
I guess the more, more the summer, fall, that's when we seem to have the most conflicts. At least traditionally in the last two or three years.
And another thing, a question for you against Jim. Insurance-wise, I think, is that coming from REMF, SARA, or whatever it is, requirements and may not be something that we are looking to change because that's put on us?
Basically, we have, we have the underlying insurance for the fields for any user, right? So, then, our policy is, if someone's gonna come and utilize the fields for their own benefit, they have to have that liability as well and it needs a city.
It's 1 million, 2 million, right?
Yes.
Not 2 million?
For general liability, the one I, the one I have, that I don't have is the, for the, the one I don't like to talk about, the child, what is it?
Sexual harassment.
Sexual abuse. We don't have one or 2 million aggregate. We have 1 million, 1 million, we don't have 2 million.
That's something we have heard from our insurance trust, REMF, and it's basically need to come in more standard throughout the state. It's a problem, unfortunately.
I know my daughters are coaching Ukiah and they had to get supplemental insurance because they were dealing with the school district down there. They were told, "This is it." They were given a year to kind of deal with it and they had to, they were kind of in a rush to meet those requirements for a lot of the same reasons. They basically, "It's not like we're picking on you," kind of thing. These are kind of being thrown on us. So, that's one that I don't know if I would be necessarily wanting to budge because otherwise it leaves the city holding the bag. And I hate to say it, but like you said, Andrew, we don't want to talk about it, but apparently it's in the news and it's out there and things are happening and you gotta cover yourself, we gotta cover the city.
Understood, yes.
But as far as the rest of it, I'd be open to, you know, letting them, parties add, at least give some input so that you can come back to us and tell us, you know, this is, we want...
Yeah, and that's fine. And like I said, this is our first attempt. I just want to be clear, and this was not an attempt to undermine, you know, any other groups or, you know, input. But there's no nice way of saying this, these are city fields. If you want to fence it off and say, "No usage," you have that right. And that's what this policy is attempting to do, is basically, this brings us to order to a very chaotic order or non-procedural process. So, I just want to be very clear that we'll accommodate to the best of our ability, but there's some hard points. And the hard point is, when the scheduling is set, the scheduling's set. Other than that, I think everything, some of the insurance requirements and notification and the cleanup on the crews is, that can be open for discussion and interpretation and refinement. But basically, if we cannot accommodate the initial request, the request that comes forward by an organization and we need to adjust schedules, that the city has the ultimate say. That's what, if we ever come through a policy resolution, that's what I'm gonna be advocating for.
So, I will say that one of my concerns was that if, if there are multiple parties who want to use the fields and there's a need at the same time and they're, they can't come to an agreement, then it would come to the city manager to make the decision. And in the past, I've been sort of a champion for letting council make decisions like that instead of leaving it in the hands of one person. However, I don't think that it would serve the best interests of the youth organizations to have five different people deciding on that. So, I think it's actually a much smarter move to have the city manager make that say. Of course, that depends on trust. And I will say unequivocally that I trust Brian and I do believe that he has the best interests of our community at heart. So, I would hope that everybody who is looking at this policy would also feel that way and recognize that the attempt here really is to make room for everyone. And as I stated at the very beginning, everyone isn't gonna get everything they want, but hopefully, everyone will get something that they want and we can accommodate as many players as possible, as often as possible. That's the goal that I have heard Brian say repeatedly and I believe that that's true. So, I personally would support a meeting with the engaged parties to make sure that they get clarity on some of the points that, you know, might be sticking for them. I do think it would be a good idea to clarify what the city's, what the city is offering as far as maintenance so that it's clear from the get-go for these leases.
Yes.
Yes, what are we providing?
Yes.
And then, the hope would be to get this ironed out before summer so that everyone is clear as mud going forward. Mick?
Yeah, I really agree with what you just said, Greta. I think it's really great to have something to work from and we need something to guide the school process clearly. And this is, this starts trying to wrap our heads around how to do that. And I agree that it probably is wise to have the city manager be the one to arbitrate when there's conflicting demands on the same field at the same time. But I also think it's really great if the people that are in fact serving our kids in the community and they're mostly doing it as volunteers and they know, you know, what their constraints are, they know where their nonprofit is registered and all that, have a little chance to have input on some of the details and maybe fight tune it a little bit before we adopt it, especially if it's not gonna, the applications aren't gonna come in the next month where we have a little time. So, I like the idea of having a meeting with the key users of the fields.
I want to be clear too, like baseball's starting, or started. And so, we're already operating, so I don't want you guys to think like we're waiting for this, like...
No, no. And the intent was to, you have the green light to go. We're not holding you back.
We just started to work on their agreement.
All right, so on Saturday, come on in.
We need to work on their agreement.
Okay, that's fine. I guess the other thing, I want to make sure that in the final agreement, I know in the past when we've had fires or some sort of emergency that we've, and I think everybody's kind of understood in the past that if we need to house CDF down there while there, while there's an emergency, that everybody kind of get, "Sorry, your Little League, whatever," or your soccer, whatever, is not gonna happen because we've got an emergency in it. So, one of the things is that I find sometimes some folks don't quite get those sort of things and they go, "Well, why did we get kicked out?" Duh! But some people don't get it, so.
No, I think that's fair. I mean, I hear what the council's saying and thank you for the compliment of trust. It is, you know, we'll work, we'll extend the invite. Unfortunately, I'm gonna be out of the office next week, but we'll try to set something up as soon as possible. We'll have a meeting. I definitely want Ken and Scott there to look at the public works component of it. And we'll see what we can bring back as soon as possible to the council.
And I also want to recognize that in the past, I know that Little League had put a lot of work. I know when we were working on the concession stands, I remember Frank Howard talking about the work that Little League had put in with some of that. So, for some of the folks that don't remember that, I remember that happening. And I do recognize when community groups put that extra effort in, whether it's the fields or some of the other stuff that, you know, I guess I do recognize that because that's a benefit to the whole community, but I also know that some, some groups like Little League have gone over and above. So, I do recognize that.
Thank you both for weighing in. I hope that we can come to some policy that makes everyone happy and clarifies this.
So, I just conferred with Jim Lance, so no formal action's gonna be taken. The council, by consensus, gave instructions to staff, i.e. myself, to reach out and we'll schedule a meeting. Dolores would be the responsible party to get something going. All right? Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Guys, you're doing an awesome job. Just for your fun, sometimes take a little walk down there around when you're doing it. It's so inspiring to see young people participating and having fun. Some of all those young people are really young.
I will say that Ian and I know each other from working on the dog park. And before the dog park existed, I used to walk my little terrier around the ballfields. And I would sort of dread when Little League would come back because suddenly they were like, "We own these fields and you've gotta get out of here." But I understood that they had a passion for it and that they were working so hard to make them beautiful and usable for the kids. And it was really great to see so much community involvement out there. And now that soccer is such a big deal, seeing the soccer teams and soccer programs there as well is tremendous. So, thank you both for the work that you do for your organizations. Says a lot about our community that you do so much. So, thank you.
For our whole community. Sorry for the little crows.
All right. We'll move on to item C of the city manager reports, and this is an informational update on the community's...
Eight. Didn't we miss, did we miss eight?
No, we did eight. That was Mick Smith.
No. Says eight, nine, eight is...
Eight, we're on eight. We're still on eight. City manager reports.
Okay. My mistake.
All right. So, thank you. Information update on the unhoused.
All right. So, in my absence of the last meeting, the topic of unhoused in this community and what services or resources available for them was brought up. I will be the first to raise my hand. This is an area that I'm not very familiar with, on the complexities of what resources are available. In the quick turnaround time, I did try to reach out to the, whatever I thought was a viable outlet for additional information. I reached out to the county and I have a email response here about some of the programs that are available. I did reach out to the fellow city managers in the county as well to see what programs that they work on. And more importantly, I was concerned or interested in cooperative efforts that they have formed within their, within their community with various organizations. To begin with, we don't have a program. We don't have a policy at the city. We don't have the resources. We haven't allocated financial resources to this problem. That's the first disclaimer. Just making that very clear. So, whatever we proceed from this point on is gonna be adventure into the unknown as we build something, okay? Whatever program or initiative we want to take on, we would have to rely on the county. The county has the means, both staffing, resources, and program support to do this. A lot of their resources are based in Ukiah. You know, they do have shelters there. Yes, there's a distance. We have to acknowledge that. There are other programs that we can apply to, grant programs to potentially start something or leverage grant... or leverage grant funds to do a community-based program. Once again, there are partners out there that I think have expressed some interest, and we may want to contact them to see where they're interested in moving forward. That is the report. I can answer whatever questions the council may, may put forward. I'll do my best I can. I know Manny from his previous, previous experience working for the other side in Mendizeno County has some insight on basically how they operate with financial resources and how they allocate it to the, to their needs.
Yeah, to speak to that, what the county gets normally is a realignment fund that comes in, is the 2011 realignment and also the 1903 realignment. Those are funding resources that are designed for creating housing, but also hospitalizations and other services that are designed for the, for the adult and older adult populations. There is an additional amount of money from the MHSA program. That is the Millionaire's Tax Program that taxes a certain amount in order to be able to cover from children to transitional age and adult. The main projects, if I remember correctly, that are still around is the organizations run under an ASO model that I designed way back in 2012 when they contracted out to, when the county contracted out their services to outside organizations. And that has still remained in place to this day. The main recipient now is River Community Services, where they used to be RCS, where they're Children's Services. And they were awarded at that time Children's System of Care. But now they have absorbed the Adult System of Care along with it due to the other organization scrubbing out of the, their inability to be able to provide the services necessary for the city, or sorry, for the county. With that being said, River Community Services is the one that we probably wanted to hold up in order to be able to see what they can pull off and what to do. Camille Schrader, I don't believe is, I don't think she is the head director anymore. It's her daughter that's the director now. So we'd have to look into seeing how we can acquire any information from them and what, what services are being provided within the city itself. I know Manzanita has a presence somewhere. I don't know exactly where. And I, and like Brian was saying earlier, there's Forest Street Project that still continues to do services, and I believe they were expanding with, by the time that I left.
I guess in the past, we, as part of our community services, part of our budget, we gave money to those community services. And I know in the past, they ran a voucher system. But the problem that I think, I think I spoke with some folks here at the last meeting, that the issue was some of the hotels weren't wanting to take the vouchers because a lot of the clients sometimes destroyed property. And so it became more like, we have vouchers, but sometimes we have no place that'll take them, kind of situation. Maybe they've had different luck, or maybe that's, that's the deal.
That's still, that is still a perception in the community. There, once again, there are more shelter, shelters and housing opportunities in Ukiah. That's where that centralized base of support is. Once again, if the council wants me to pursue this matter, I'll keep fact-finding and come up with some other options as we move forward.
So Mads, you were the one who initially sort of brought this up and requested that this become a council discussion point. Do you have a particular suggestion or thought on what you think you would like the city to do, how the city could help with this issue?
Well, I'm mostly basing my not very depth of knowledge on this either with conversations with Helen Flandis, who's the director of Manzanita, which by the way is at the Redwood, at the Methodist Church in the back area there. But they only operate weekdays until five o'clock. So, you know, she just became heartbroken at having to turn people out into the elements at five o'clock at night when it's been like this, you know, snow and rain and below freezing temperatures. And some of the people don't even have a car, let alone a place that's heated. So anyway, her, the thing that kind of lit my imagination was to have a first step, at least, be a warming center that would be a sheltered place with some heat for people that have absolutely no other place to go because we don't have a shelter. And we don't, and there are, even if there are a few vouchers, and apparently there's one motel that still takes the vouchers, they only have enough for one voucher per person per month or something. So, you know, maybe tonight they got a voucher, tomorrow night they got a lag, you know? And people can die in this kind of water. So to me, the idea of a warming center that could be much easier to pull off in terms of getting the facility and staffing could be, could be a first step.
Are you volunteering county resources for that?
No, but I want us, the city, and us, the community, to be pursuing, how could we create that and get out, get whatever obstacles are in the way of creating that? So the city obviously isn't going to be running this kind, this is not a city service that we can provide. We have our hands full. This is not in our budget. But the county has some resources, the community has some resources. And I just want the city, I want this to become a public discussion and for the city to enable solutions if they, if the community comes up with them. The group, WELL, has initiated this building community, and this was one of the first topics that really caught people's imagination. Yes, we should not let people, you know, freeze to death at night. You know, we've got to, we've got to be able to do something as a community. And so we, that group called Building Community is going to meet again. One of the focus groups or like a, is going to be trying to problem solve, how can we put what the county can offer, what the community can offer together to do something so that we aren't in this absolutely unacceptable situation of putting people out with no shelter whatsoever? And it's true, I mean, right now, basically, the only resources are in Ukiah, and people can't get to a bus and get to Ukiah. And anyway, it's, it's a problem. So I also just wanted, I know that Jane and maybe Dicky wanted to address us too. Maybe they have some, you know, what are the steps that, that the city could at least participate in clearing any obstacles to something?
So I guess I would agree with your statement that a warming center sounds like a wonderful thing that is needed by a segment of our population. However, it is beyond the scope of what the city can offer. So if you're looking for concrete things that the city can do to help move this community conversation along, perhaps if WELL or any other organization that is addressing this needs a space to host a public forum, perhaps.
Well, we would like to participate.
The city could, you know, host with the community center or something along those, along that nature. I guess what Brian, what I think Brian is looking for is concrete direction on how far we would like him to continue to push with the county to see what can come back to our community that the city can put, is that correct?
Yes, I mean, there, the information I received from the county is there's programs out there, but there's going to, it's going to take some cooperation, it's going to take some effort. And some of it's not, maybe we can channel one of these community-based organizations in that way to submit an application, and we can be the support agency in that. Because there's options out there, and that's probably a great first approach is to have a facilitated discussion, bring the players involved, stakeholders, and see what we can do.
Thank you. Jane and Dicky, would you like to speak?
Yes.
Okay.
Just keep in mind you have three minutes.
Right, still Jane McCabe. So I got interested in this through Helen Flandis too. And also, I would say, and I have a deep interest in this because of my own family and my own son who has a diagnosis of schizophrenia, and he's doing really well now. But it only took about thirty-three years to get there. So some of that time, he did end up being homeless. And, and that was because of all kinds of things. However, we have people in our town right now that can't get to Ukiah. They don't have the money to get to Ukiah. Some of these people graduated high school right over here. I know this because Helen said. So there are people, and it's a huge amount of stuff that people have to accomplish to actually get the social security through Medi-Cal, Medicare, hundreds of pages, literally. And fortunately for my son, when this was happening, when he was like eighteen years old, his family was supporting him, and he also had a social worker that was supporting him to line up for benefits and so on. She's got people there that are coming to Manzanita on a regular basis that haven't been able to manage to do that because they didn't when they were younger, and they don't have the mental capacity to do it. So, so I'm just talking about basic services, like what, what we would do for animals. Stray animals get put in a shelter so that they don't just die in the cold. So that's just what I'm talking about. And actually, what happened in the, in the town of Sonoma was they were able to establish a warming center, which they got the blessings from the city council. I think only, they gave them a permit to open a yoga warming center, which operates at night from like eight in the evening until eight the next morning, or something like that. Nine to nine the next morning. They serve them coffee when they leave. They have yoga mats. They have heat. They have a bathroom. They got a permit for under $600 to do that. Now, I don't know how they're doing all the financing. I have to say, I have not done my due diligence and called all these people and done all this. I don't know how Mads does it. I, I don't have the mental capacity to keep running an item that direction. But, but it happened, and it happened there. And so I know if it can happen once, it can happen twice, three times. It wasn't that far from us.
Thank you. Dicky, would you state your name for Dolores, please?
My name is Richard Winkle, but people know me as Dicky. So Jane's a dreamer, and we started talking about this a while back. And let me just say to you, if people that are on the street, there's people you walk by every day, you don't know that they're unhoused because they're, they have their intelligence, they have a job, they have a car they can sleep in. You see them in Safeway, you see them in Manzanita. Anyway, either you know this or you don't. If you don't, now you'll think about it. Okay. So your general plan from '92 said that you'd be putting 10% of the, what do you call it? The, the thing that hotels and motels put in, into, into the unhoused people. I'll bet you haven't put a nickel away, which means that you didn't follow your own general plan, which you paid $260,000 last year to upgrade the land use part of. Okay, so I'm just saying to you that don't BS yourself and just do a general plan, but follow it. Okay? All right. Now, there are places that are already doing this. You know, you talk about, oh, we can't do it because of this, we got to, the city isn't going to do anything other than issue the permit for the space that somebody like us finds for people to be in. Now, they did this in the city of Sonoma, and they, what they did, they used it as an over, well, a yoga center. There's no beds in it. There's yoga mats. And something like 35 people, they opened it at five in the evening, they closed it at, they closed it at eight the next morning. There's a bathroom in there. That's it. You can either make this complex and confusing, or you can cut to the simplicity of saying, okay, here's the start. We have, and I'm looking around right now for commercial properties that'll, you know, and to find out what the numbers are on it to see, you know, what, it's only going to be open from, it's like, like November to March. And it's only going to be open during cold days, and in this town, you might have 10 people using it. I mean, that's about it. You're not going to have a ton. I'm asking you to keep it simple, and when we come to you, see that you can, can do rather than can't do. And I'm nine seconds early. Thank you. Thank you for listening. I really appreciate it. It's a pleasure to come to you and feel good about it, believe me. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I really do appreciate all this.
Yes, indeed.
And just to, just to kind of set up the record a little bit, we get from TOT approximately $400,000. And in that, out of that, $40,000 would be earmarked out of the general plan in order to be able to cover that. And with that, we have, we do do our daily bread, and also the Food Bank, Willitsinger Center, County Library and Museum, but yeah, and they total way more than $40,000. So we do put in funding in order to be able to help out the community in that sense, but that doesn't mean we can't do more.
Thank you, Manny. And what a pleasure it is to have someone like Manny doing this stuff. You talk to them.
We're, we're in such great straits, having a finance director who can speak to us clearly and help illuminate all of these financial matters for us. All right, Brian, do you feel like you got what you needed?
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much.
I guess I will throw that back, because the council, clear on your, your instructions and guidance to what you want to see me follow through is try to organize a meeting, facilitate a discussion, and see what options are left.
I don't expect you to organize a meeting either. I would greatly appreciate you and/or Dusty or whoever, maybe Manny, participating with the community people who are trying to put the pieces together.
I guess what I'm saying, what I meant is that we'll make it known that we want to have a meeting, invite as many of the interested parties.
Can I just say something? You know, years ago, there was a group that wanted to start a teen center. And I'll just throw that out, and I just hope, and your travels out there with whoever you speak with, that they put together this plan, and that's how I kind of got together and got involved with the kids club. But here's the problem that, and I say problem, that the first incarnation of this was, give us a space and we'll make it happen was kind of how it was. And eventually, the folks got a space, but it wasn't well-run, and it kind of died on the vine. And so whatever the community brings forward, that I think they keep in mind that whatever comes forward needs to have whatever rules or that it's run properly or that mitigate things because some, I would hate for the good work to be killed because the initial incarnation comes in and, and upsets community members or whatever, you know, that.
I'm not going to tell Bear about this.
Because I, I think it's one that, that if it's done right and, and you mitigate things, the last thing you want to see is folks.
Be upset?
Well, be upset, but you also don't want folks doing things out in the community they shouldn't be doing. And then, then the community as a whole basically gets sour on it, and, and it takes away from the good work you want to do. So that's kind of my.
Even simple has to be well-executed.
Thank you.
Yes.
I want to just add one other thing about the Sonoma example. Apparently, in the first month that they did operate this warming center, the nighttime crime rate went down. And so the, especially, I think, the police department trying to kick people out, whatever. They actually saved money on their policing at night because of having a warming center. But you're right, it has to be done correctly and sustainably. And it may turn out that what we're doing is solving next winter's problem, but let's be, let's get, you know, let's get on it before it hits because this winter's been pretty grueling.
And I like faith-based community programs that sometimes, if government can help, but sometimes the, some people like to point at the private sector or the folks out there that. that are, know how to run things, do a better job than.
But Jerry, you know, when they had fires and everything, what'd you guys do? What'd you guys open up when they had fires? You took care of the community, didn't you?
We actually called the county and the county brought open the shelters.
You did, didn't you?
Yeah, the county.
We're just saying, here's people in the community that don't have a voice. They got us. And until we get, you know, we might wake up tomorrow morning and forget about this. I don't think so. But, you know, we're pretty much dedicated to finding a space. And once we find a space, we'll make it as simple as possible and we'll come to you to get a permit. And I just got a permit to put an external door in our basement. And they did it. It was no big deal. It was great. $216.90.
Thank you, Dickie.
And it's the first time I've built something that I've actually gotten a permit for because Jane did me. So, yeah.
All right. We are going to move on to Brian's final verbal report, item D of the city manager reports. Thank you both.
Yeah, I'll wrap this up. I think before this meeting was initially started, you saw a good amount of commotion across the way and all the signage. FEMA's in town and all their allied agencies. So I just want to put that out there. If any property owner, both within the city or unincorporated in Mendocino County, suffered impacts from the recent storms dating back to December 27th, please come down, talk to these representatives. They have the ability to help you. I'm not saying they have free money. There's no such thing as free money, but there's other assistance programs available. So they have extended their tenure here. They want to continue providing resources to the community. They've been really great to work with. They've been very accommodating. I know they've been very polite on their requests. So good to have them. Just teaming up with our federal colleagues is always a great thing.
How long will they be here?
They extended it to middle, the end of next week.
End of next week. They'll be leaving Sunday and Monday. I'll be backing up.
So, yes. So that is some great things going on out there. One thing I want to bring up, and I've mentioned this to the council, but I think this is a time that I'm going to present it in a public forum. The council has been receiving updates from me for at least a year now regarding the attempts by the four municipalities to reach a master tax sharing agreement with the county. There has been a draft agreement on the table for nearly eight months now. And the ad hoc committee convened two weeks ago and threw us a curve ball, threw the municipalities a curve ball in this. And they submitted a revised agreement late on Friday afternoon. The four managers have not had an opportunity to meet and discuss what's going on. And the reason why, one of the reasons why I want to bring this up is that it has impacts to Dusty and his efforts on the general plan amendment with future growth opportunities for this community to accommodate housing of all types, for all purposes. And the county is, it's a little concerning on how they run their accounts and what's their interpreting their resources are in generating. The master tax sharing agreement, right now, it doesn't really affect the three municipalities. Ukiah is the outlier because of bad planning. There's a lot of sprawling growth within that valley outside of jurisdictional limits that are on services. And Ukiah's doing their best bit to kind of bring some order and have some accountability for those property owners and business owners that they can expect the cities are configured to provide municipal services better than the counties. And I want to convey that also to our neighbors here in the valley that as we go through the general plan amendment, there might be opportunities, we're going to annex or seek to annex properties that receive services from the city. So that's important for this tax sharing agreement. Unfortunately, it is not the three musketeers, the four musketeers. Basically, the cities went into this unified front. We didn't want to, apparently the county has in the past, has practiced divide and conquer. And we agreed from the onset that we were not going to do that. And I just want to make this very clear to the council that that's our intention. And I just want to start briefing the council on how this starts shaping up because we took a very severe churn at the last minute that was not expected. I'm turning to the mayor. I do know we need to start setting those meetings up. We're not there district supervisor.
Send me another matter to him today.
That's important. We need to have his coverage and representation at these meetings and get his updates because we can, we need to work together. And sometimes we're going to have differences of agreements and he's going to need to hear those. Okay?
I have a question about that. Is there, there is no recourse, like with the state or somebody, if the county simply refuses to deal equitably and fairly with the four cities? Is there any besides, the board of supervisors obviously have?
Yeah, ultimately, yes. And that's the thing. I mean, right now, what we're looking at is revisions that were generated at their staff level. And it still may play out at the county board of supervisors. They may go in a different direction. But this is also playing out in the bigger or the broader spectrum of their financial picture. You know, they're recognizing that they're experiencing some revenue shortfall. And the Ukiah Valley properties are basically their windfall generator for retail taxes. And they're a little concerned. So just want to put that out there. And just on a closing note, I did attend the Cal League City Manager Conference. It was interesting. The managers from Lake County and Mendo County, we have a good relationship. We met a couple of times throughout the sessions. We talked about what we heard down there. It's really a state of halves, you know? It's Southern California, the metropolitan areas. And then north, there's not a lot of representation from city managers, you know, in Northern California. So we want to make sure our voice is heard. So I want to convey to Jerry, I think Larry as well, make sure you attend those Redwood Empire Division meetings. And when you get emails from Sarah Sanders, our representative, please respond. And if you have any inquiries of what's going on, let me know. We need to be a unified voice. We've got to make sure that Sacramento understands that there are concerns in the state about logging activities and natural resource extraction and small town habits and Main Streets and businesses on Main Street and dealing with Caltrans, all those items which go amiss in the larger areas. We need to have a voice on those issues.
I have a question for everybody. You get Sarah's emails. I was under the impression you got them at the same time I got them.
So I guess that's a good point. All right. Well, when we receive them, I'll print them out and get them out to you.
So I didn't want to be being redundant if some of those go out.
So that's what I got, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Brian. All right, we're going to move on to department recommendations and action items. The first one is to adopt a resolution to approve the agreement with Springbrook Software to acquire their, to support the city's information management needs and finance, HR and utility billing. And we will hear from our finance director.
So back in October, we set out an RFD in order to be able to replace our accounting software system. It is antiquated and semi-falling apart, it seems. It's probably been doing that for a little while now. And when we moved off of payroll, the payroll module for this, I think we were utilizing Ukiah in order to be able to assist us in payroll at one point in time, and then we moved on to ABD. We need to be able to have a finance software that actually actively works with payroll and runs a payroll processing program along with utility billing and project and other things that get us up into the 21st century. And there's been changes in how charter accounts have been made and maintained in the past, matching revenues with expenses so that we can truly utilize the numbers to see that what programs are covering their expenses, which ones are slipping or so on and so forth. So those type of things that we really want to be able to have access to at our fingertips and be able to provide more solid reports to you guys. That's kind of the driving force behind this project. And so we checked out four separate systems and had demoed three. And out of the three, we picked one. And that is the Springbrook software system, which is interesting because I wasn't expecting them to be a player in this one. So I've actually operated Springbrook in the past, and they have upgraded their system since I last worked with it. So I'm actually intrigued and interested in moving forward with this and actually developing the new charter accounts. So that's what I have. It follows along a very, you know, multiple points that you guys have done as ministry goals in the past where, and so I tried to lay them out in the agenda summary here, where we were marking down all the various reasons as to why having a new accounting software is beneficial to us and will help us out in being able to see our numbers in a more profound and better way. Go ahead.
So Manny, I see subscription, subscription. Is it kind of like Microsoft now as opposed to we don't own it? So.
So that was a good question. And I also asked that same question because I want to know whether or not we have the ability to access it, let's say, five or 10 years down the line, and we move off of the system and move over to another, would we still be able to access the system in terms of being able to get numbers from the past? And yes, that is a part of it. If we, it is a subscription-based system, and the system is operated under the cloud. So we don't have to house the servers necessarily in order to be able to keep the system up and running. The updates are automatic. We don't have to do any upgrades to any servers later on down the line. So because it's cloud-based and subscription services, it's easier for us to implement. And part of this agreement is that we will be able to access our software and our information in, like, let's say, 10 years down the line, we move off of the system and we move to a different one. We would still be able to call up the Springbrook software system and say, hey, can we pull this information up from this particular year? That we'd have access to that system to be able to pull that information out for that period.
But you wouldn't have to be paying the subscription fee.
We wouldn't have to be paying the subscription fee at that point.
So.
That's my understanding of it.
So I guess two more questions. One is, since it's subscription-based, I guess, I look at like Paradise, when the town burnt up, you would be able to access this if we were in a trailer at the fairgrounds in Ukiah.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so that's one advantage. And then, oh, I had another question. Oh, if we had a ransomware sort of situation, they will cover us then in that respect?
Yes, there's backups with the subscription.
As well as Apex, our IT consultant, who have security provision. So just relaying what Manny was saying about being a cloud basis, and that's one of the things we were favoring in our request for responses, because that's going to reduce our load for additional server. As we're going through this clean house of new IT upgrades, that's one less server we need to acquire.
I have one question for you. Are you sure you want to leave ACS behind? Sorry.
1999 is calling, and they want it back.
Oh, it's 1995. And the benefit of like having it that far back is that we're able to actually, when I'm looking up different things, various projects that I am going back that far on, it's nice to have that information. But, you know, yeah, wow.
I would say a DOS-driven system.
Yes.
We need to move on from that.
And then one more question. So given that we are putting the old to bed, how would you deal with looking up as far as legacy information? Do we still retain that in some form or another? Or will it be?
My take on it is that we'll probably have to download the information onto our servers and such so that we have them at the ready. And they can be downloaded as summary data in order for us to then have it for.
So are we still paying, is it ACS?
ACS. We may want to pay ACS for one of the login access points in order to be able to maintain that system for a little while longer while we move on.
Transition, okay.
Transition. After a while, though, I'd want to probably get rid of it.
Kill it. Okay, now that was only my concern, is if we had some numbers there and all of a sudden an audit comes in or some question regarding the grant and how do we access those old, old numbers?
Usually it's audit plus five, and so that's probably what we'll adhere to.
Larry, Manny, do either of you have any questions? I'll enter in a motion here.
I saw move.
You saw move what?
Staff recommendation.
Okay. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Okay, so this is a motion to approve the resolution to increase the budget and enact the contract for Springbrook system to modernize our information services and human resources finance and utility billing. Dolores, may we have a roll call? Councilmember Strong?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mayor Conni? Yes. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. Item B, adopt a resolution to approve the mid-year budget adjustment for fiscal year 2223. Presenting member, Manny.
Hello. I got, basically what I have before you here is a list of various projects and items of which we are increasing budget for and finding new budget and using existing appropriations to cover the cost of it. My intent on whenever I approach a mid-year budget is to be able to try and pay for it with existing appropriations so that we maintain a balanced budget. So that is the approach that I took here today. There is a few components where we are actually using fund balance, and that is actually fund balance from either the transportation fund or water or enterprise. But when it comes down to the general fund, I try to protect it as much as possible. For the most part, you'll see transfers in and transfers out throughout the actions. That is because I'm augmenting the way that we operate our project-based systems. One of the things that I really wanted to do was to go into a component, or like a process where the project lives in a CIP account and that the various funds that are funding that CIP pay into it, utilizing transfer in. And the reason for that is so that we can track our dollars and make sure that we maintain and ensure that we are paying for each of the projects properly. And if we are looking at a project that has, like, is in five years down the line and we want to be able to put away, you know, $500,000 for a $500,000 project, we could do so, have that put away into the project, into the project fund as an assigned fund balance so that then when the five years are up, we have that money saved and set aside. It hasn't necessarily been done that way in the past, which has led to like jarring impacts on the budget year over year when it comes down to it. And so this is something that really, this is a mechanism that I'm wanting to utilize in order to be able to smooth out the costs. And that'll be for a lot of various things. And part of the new Springbrook software will help assist us in that as well. So with that, I only have one other thing, which I apologize for, you said frontier days, and I missed that one up. I do recognize there's an I.
And a question?
Sure.
Aura. The aura funding?
Aura funding. So aura funding is not necessarily in this. I think we were planning on bringing that up in another item. But as for the other contracts subsection for the financial software, we're utilizing aura, and so I wanted to be able to put that in there as a part of the mid-year budget.
The acronym, can you just?
Oh, sorry. American Recovery Reinvestment Act.
Okay, so that's the money we were getting.
Yes.
Is that the same thing as ARPA?
Yes.
Okay, that's why I wasn't sure.
They needed so many different things.
Okay.
Does council have any questions about any of these mid-year budget adjustments? Or, I'm sorry, appropriations?
I have one more thing. I'm sorry, I neglected. During the process, I also relooked at our encumbrance carryover. This is every, at the end of each year, we have encumbrances that are identified as continuing costs. And so we, at the end of the fiscal year, we will encumber the funds and put it into an account to be able to cover the costs from prior year appropriations. And that's an encumbrance from the prior year. I looked at them and I saw that there was some encumbered items that didn't necessarily need to be encumbered any longer. They were already budgeted in. That's the Lost Lane project, and there's the rail trail project. For whatever reason, there was $900,000 associated with it, which we didn't know what that was for, and I talked to Dusty and everything like that. So we're just reducing it by about $340,000 because that's what was also budgeted in. So, and that'll continue this across and forward for the initial planning phase of the rail trail. of the Rail Trail project. And then when the actual construction phase comes out, we will do a new appropriation to that.
All right. Is that everything?
That's everything.
Okay. Any questions from council?
I'm so glad we have Manny.
That's the recurring refrain around here. Anybody? I will entertain a motion.
I will move Resolution 2023, whatever it is, authorizing approving director finance to adjust appropriations for fiscal year 202223 within the various accounts as incorporated in Exhibits A and B.
Excellent.
There you want its specificity?
Thank you. And just so you know, that was direction I received, so. All right. We have a motion and a second. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Strong?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mayor Hahn?
Yes.
Thank you.
In discussions with Manny, we're probably going to have another adjustment coming to you in May timeframe, as we get a better handle on our budget, and that's going to be closing out the nearly the fiscal year as well. And then, as mentioned, the ARPA funds budget program will be coming in the next month to two as well, at least as a working document for the council's consideration.
Is the ARPA funds, that's, we're not, there's no danger of having to pay any of that back, right? It's, it's a done deal?
No, we actually fall in line with another provision. If we so chose to actually utilize the AR, the ARPA funds as a, as a loss in revenue component, we're under the, we're under the, we're under the threshold. We're not be able to do that as quickly on run. So, yeah.
So Brian, you're saying that's going to probably come in the next month?
I'm looking at either the second meeting in March or the first meeting in April. And what we have is a preliminary wish list. And we, basically, the, the program requirements is, is that we have to have a council adopted resolution acknowledging the allocation and the spending program out of that, and then we can move forward.
Will that come to the finance committee?
Yes, we'll probably have a finance committee.
And we're looking to meet maybe within the next month?
Middle of March?
Middle of March.
I don't think we'll have, we may have just an initial breakdown to just get your heads around what we're looking at.
Okay.
There's also, we may have a meeting with you, Rodriguez, in regards to selecting the member candidates.
Great, thank you. All right. The white dot on the screen has been waiting for us, so we're going to have Andrea introduce this next item, which is to adopt a resolution awarding a contract to VAS Roofing for the replacement of the roof at City Hall and the Art Center for a total not to exceed the amount of $109,550. Andrea, are you there?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you for waiting so patiently.
Great, thank you.
Doesn't work for me.
I'm recommending a, an award of a contract to VAS Roofing to replace the roof at City Hall and the Art Center. The work would include the full replacement of the roofing material down to the sheathing, the plywood boards. And, and the work at City Hall would also include the replacement of all 25 skylights and flashing. So I guess with that, I just wanted to see if anyone had any questions.
I guess the only thing I'd say, it's a prime example of kicking the can, and now we're stuck having to deal with this now. And so I, I know that we didn't have the money, and now that we have to deal with it. But I think the community wants something that isn't leaky when they have events, and I think one of the walls back here, because of the leaks and stuff, I remember at one point, it seems like I could just push through it. So I, I'm happy we're able to do it.
Andrea, we've gotten so used to the beautiful blue tarps. Is there any possibility that VAS can use blue asphalt?
There actually was a discussion on the color. Yeah, we had options. I got voted out. I don't know what color I was looking for. Dark green or something? Yeah. Yeah, that was the thing, was too much green. Never could have no green.
A question, Andrea, for the, for the Art Center. Is it going to be composition as opposed to the slate? Is that, is that my thinking of the right one?
It is a composition, shingle roof.
Oh, it is? Okay. It's the library that's.
The library has.
Slate, then that's it. Okay. All right.
And City Hall is going to be a combination of the bitumen, torch-down material, and composite roof.
Any other questions from council? Would anybody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. We approve the staff recommendation to authorize the resolution for replacement of roofs at City Hall and the Art Center not to exceed $109,550, and authorize city manager to execute contract documents and change orders up to 15% of the amount.
I agree.
We have a motion and a second. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Strong?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mayor Hahn?
Yes. Thank you, Andrea.
Thank you, Andrea. I see the snow pile in the.
It was snowing pretty hard.
I had to see it in your back window.
Good night.
All right, we already took care of item D earlier, earlier in the evening, so we'll move on to the department monthly reports. I do have a question for Kathy.
Yes, ma'am.
The airport report. Hold on, let me see if I can find it.
Okay, I gotta find it, too.
Okay, it's the fourth item on your monthly achievements. hung a new blank that is now illuminated. What is it? I'm on pins and needles.
Great.
A word missing.
Green parking lot replaced parking and hung a new. That was a flag.
A new flag. Wonderful, thank you.
Flag.
Flag, and it's lit.
Yeah, it's lit. It was looking pretty shabby.
A standard United States of America flag.
Well done. Thank you.
Sorry.
All right. Anybody have any questions for Kathy about the airport report?
I would like to say thank you for approving Mike Smith's agreement tonight. He's done a lot of hard work in, in getting it here, but we're here, and now we're going to continue with the rest of the hard work. And we're looking forward to seeing that go up and then dealing with reach and getting theirs going. So thank you.
Thank you for all your hard work there. All right, community development. Dusty, have you got anything to add to this full report?
So, yeah, the, between the City Rail and Trail project, the man who's on an updated trying to keep our city manager happy, the Rail Trail project.
Is that possible?
No.
Okay. Tight ship here, tight ship.
Katie, can you get more of it? We have a public meeting scheduled for March 20th there. It's an open house, so please do go up to the 6 and 8. Hopefully you can make it for the whole deal. It's going to be here at the community center. There's information on our Facebook page, Instagram, on the City of Willett's planning of community development on the website. There's a link also in the council agenda tonight. We're keeping up with the Great River Trail Agency, and so there's a neat opportunity to not only focus on Willett segment, the Great River Trail, but also understand its role and, and how part of this much larger Great River Trail project. So encourage folks to, to attend and, and share some ideas on, on what, how you want to see and make use of that trail. So very important meeting, and hope that community members are able to attend. So we have been, we recognize that working with Caltrans to establish some downtown village guidance sign is more important than ever. We had a meeting with them actually earlier this week and, and got some commitments to them to get the ball rolling on getting an updated estimate on the cost of the signage and an update on when they're truly be able to install them. So keep council updated on that. The last time we got an estimate from them was four or five years ago. So maybe that we're coming back with requests for some more funding to support the, I guess it's, I'm not sure if you've been able to find here, but grateful to Caltrans for attending that initiative, and hopefully we got the contraction, and our city planner will be bugging them weekly to get some action on that request. The other thing that I wanted to, this is good news, is you may recall that some months back, you came to council for permission to request to submit a grant application and receive permanent local housing allocation funds to support the housing rehab program. So now, and I'm happy to say that we were awarded those funds. So we were awarded $371,566, and we are going to be meeting with our consultants the first week in March to begin the validating that program, and they will be bringing that, the program details back to council at a public hearing to get some feedback and potential support or approval. So again, this is something that comes out of our housing element, guidance, and it also fits in with the council goals. And we recognize it's not just about trying to support new housing, it's also taking care of our existing housing stock. So both Brian and I are very excited to get that, to get that justice. I wanted to share that with council as well.
Thank you. I already have a number of community members who are excited about that and would like to contact you about it, and they were hopeful that the city would be awarded that.
Certainly, everyone's welcome to, to contact the community development department, myself included. Right now, again, we're just getting the, we have to get the, the program guidelines approved through council, and then at least submitted to ACSB. So we are, you know, some months away from getting that program up and running, but certainly happy to, to talk to people and let them know, you know, wherever I can now. But we're not yet accepting applications, I guess is what I'm trying to say.
Thank you. Congratulations.
$371,000 is wonderful, but when you're talking about the cost of upgrading things on existing housing, that's going to have to get spread to, you know, there'll be a, it won't be enough to do it all at once.
Yeah, and you're absolutely right. It's, it's a little bit of a drop in the bucket, so to speak. But I do think it will make a difference. You know, you're keying in on the fact that, right, we probably don't want to give $100,000 away at a time, and then we're going to need to help three or four people. And the other thing to add to that is that, that, it's looking like there's about $90,000 a year that would come in annually after that to support the program. And what we're hearing, although it's not in writing yet, is that this was a five-year program, but it's like, it's looking like it's going to be an annual ongoing program with the city in participation, so.
And having jumped this initial hurdle, will it be easier for subsequent years?
Sure, also.
Yeah.
Especially if we can show a success rate.
All right. Great. Thank you, Dusty. Engineering, yes, Matt?
I have two questions on your focus for next month. One of them is the vacant commercial building registration program. Is that kind of on schedule?
It, it is. We've actually completed some additional inspections of vacant buildings since this was written. What, what's left to do is, is we've sent notice out to those folks that we believe are subject to the program, but not everyone has responded. And then those that responded, they, they haven't really responded with a complete necessary response. So kind of what's left to do is further remind these folks, you know, about the importance of participating in the program. And unfortunately, if they're not able to respond in timely fashion, then it becomes a difficult one.
And then the EV charging station, you'll report that next, next month?
Yeah, our city planner is working on just an informational report to share with you of some, some information regarding our existing charging station.
Thank you. Engineering report, is there anyone? Oh, Andrea, are you still here?
I am.
Okay. Is there anything you would like to point out?
No, I don't have anything specific at the moment. Just working with consultants to develop projects for this coming year, and I'm available for any questions.
Do council members have any questions for Andrea? Okay. All right, you're off the hook. Thank you for your thorough report.
Enjoy the snow.
All right. Finance department.
So anything additional? Once again, my focus is to try and get those audits out. I have been running into some issues here and there for the Fund 690 and then also bank refund, but we have made significant progress on all of the payroll of those. And we are barring two issues that we have with ACS. We're about ready to upload. We've uploaded two the last two years, and we're about ready to upload all of this year so far. So from there, we're able to finally start getting some traction in on the audits.
Is 690, is that the gas trucks?
No, 690 actually was a payroll liability account. It was basically a oversight control account that the ACS system used in order to be able to process payroll. And it, the direction from prior directors was to utilize that as a, as a.
Almost like a centralized account.
Yeah.
To balance everything.
To balance everything. And that, and I, I need to untangle that. So, yeah. There's about two years' worth of untangling to do. But we're, we've made significant progress on that. Doing the payroll was a huge component of that, and it basically gets rid of a lot of the issues associated with that Fund 690 because it has phantom payments out that never really happened, or they did, but they weren't in their proper spot. By doing payroll, we placed it in their proper spot, and now those are no longer necessary in the, in the Fund 690. But there are real transactions that have occurred in the Fund 690, so I have to pull them out on an individual basis. So that's, that's what's come to some.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Matt, because I was feeling like it sounds stupid to ask what the Fund 690 was.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's, yeah, it's just a fund, it's a designation, and all it is.
And it was misused for all sorts of garbage, yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, Manny.
And I also wanted to thank the labor department for lending us their out.
I think we need to throw that in a budget to get it out. I think it works better than our last situation when we couldn't hear Brian.
What do they call it, the mutual aid? Isn't there something we can loan them to offset the borrowing of the out?
We loan them Manny on.
It's still always more than that, right?
Yeah, you know, working with Dolores, reached out to Michelle over there, and they allowed us to use it, and I think there's some agreement, and we'll look at it investment, too.
You know, I thought, Brian, you did a remarkable job with hand gestures.
Yeah.
And facial expressions.
Thank you, Jim. All in a day's work.
I thought it was particularly exciting having everybody get their, their watch updates from right up. All right.
Gotta love it, gotta love it.
The only official thing is us under snapping items. I put down that we have two recruits in two separate police academies. We now have one recruit in one academy at the San Rosa One. The, our other recruit, the female that joined the Delta College, voluntarily withdrew this past week and a half or so. Despite my efforts and the great efforts to get her to recommit, she was pretty out at that. That was it for her, so.
Done.
On the right side, Silver Lightning, talking to the recruit staff, they had referred an unsponsored recruit that they had who was interested. She called me today, and she's coming up tomorrow to meet with me and take a look around. She said she is interested in coming up. She is currently lives in Lowdy, but would relocate. So that was kind of a plus side to that. So, and she's at the same level of training, they're in the same, they work in the same They're in the same, they were in the same class. So she will also be, you know, works great for both sides. She's graduating in April as well. So keep my fingers crossed that we can get that replacement in place. That's my answer. Anything else?
I want to thank you very much for the car that sits down by Brookside School for the last week. It's been really very nice, and it has slowed the people down. That's very nice. I appreciate it.
We tried to do that. We're also trying to, our radar trailer down a little bit. When it's back up again, we're going to put it back up on fine. And I know they take that curve a little too quickly sometimes, so.
I think just the car there is really nice.
And we put that out, and a couple of the guys in particular have attention to being up there and making themselves visible.
Yeah.
I will say that a car could be useful on Main Street, too. Lately, in the downtown area, it's been a little alarming watching pedestrians trying to cross and waiting and not having anyone stop, even in pouring rain.
You know, now that you say that, you reminded me, I, for those who don't know, I'm sure, right, as forward as this info. Former Sergeant Ray Brady will be coming back as a reserve officer for us. And I told him one of his first tasks is to do another pedestrian crossing on Main Street, a couple of locations there. So that'll be one of his first tasks. We'll get that by the end of the next month.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to Public Works.
Unfortunately, Karen's out. So if you have any questions, we'll be back there.
I actually had a question for Karen, and I sent it as an email. The bark areas around the trees, the new trees on Main Street, look great. However, before they were barked, it was pretty evident that they were prime locations for dog walkers. And it's rather gross. And I just wondered if Public Works has at all considered the installation of dog waste stations on some of the more frequented blocks. I also happen to know that the Willets Dog Park has some extra funds that they may be willing to pitch in to help with that effort.
I thought those funds were utilized.
We purchased signs, but we still have funds. I'd like to get rid of that.
Okay, I thought they were, I thought the signs covered them.
No, we still have money.
Is there a particular area, or, I mean, are you looking?
I'd say pretty much from North Valley Bank to Commercial Street is pretty rough. Yeah. And probably sections of Commercial Street, too, in some of the older planted areas, even just on the block.
I bring my own bags, by the way.
You're a good one. Not all dog owners are, unfortunately, so well-trained. All right. Other than that, I just would say that, you know, I continue to hear positive things from the community members about how good things are looking and how much Public Works has a high, high visibility these days, so.
They're hopping out.
Yeah, yeah.
They're hopping, yep.
And they're friendly. That's what I like. They're out there and, yeah.
Utilities.
Yeah, I do have a couple of updates to that. I don't know if I did mention that often. If you did, Drew Lesby, our operator, passed his grade three water treatment exam. And then this last week, Chris Yeller, newest operator, passed his water distribution two. And also on Friday, passed his grade three treatment.
Nice.
Which is hard to do during the level. Yeah. Take some time in school.
Very good.
Congratulations on that. And if you guys have any questions?
Update on flushing?
Yes. We completed East Hill. I threw the Hell Creek subdivision yesterday. And then we put the brakes on this week due to the weather. More reasons why it's weak. Plan is to hit Bechel Road, Cheryl Lane, and then we jump over to Harrod Manor. And then we, we'll hit Main Street on the three nights. Days get to be determined.
I did want to just point out to any members of the public who might be listening, I had spoken to Scott earlier about the increase in truck fill station numbers. It's almost three times as much as sold last January. And he would just like to indicate why, why we saw a jump there?
Yeah, the increase is, normally you don't, you don't see any usage in, in January, or very little. It's for the dust control, for the demolition of the old hospital. So they're, they're keeping that, that, there's only user on that last one.
Thank you.
That will not continue.
It really looks strange to look up on that hill and see nothing there.
It is, yeah, it's very odd. All right. If no one else has any questions for Scott, I think that's a wrap on the department monthly reports. Thank you. Thank you, all the departments. Move on to Item 11, City Council Announcements, Communications and Reports. Madge?
EDFC, the Economic Development and Finance Corporation. I believe it's meeting tomorrow afternoon. I'm not sure. I forgot to bring my calendar, so I'm not sure. And I've been inquiring and complaining a lot about the NCSO Waste Management Authority. I'm powerless to get anything to happen there because only one person on the board is the ad hoc committee. But they're supposed to be finalizing the contractual documents to bring to a meeting, hopefully really soon. But it hasn't happened yet.
Okay. All right, Larry?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay. Jerry?
Yeah, I think, the Redwood Chapter meeting of Vegas Cities, I think we're going to be meeting in, throw it out here, on Arcata on March 24th. So that'll be the.
By the way, I'm wrong about EDFC. It's not, it's not this week, it's the problem.
That's all I.
Okay. The only meeting that I attended was a mayor's meeting this afternoon, and that was to appoint the alternate for Senate Clean Power. And that was Jim Hugel from Monterino. And I wanted to clarify, last time I had indicated that Supervisor Jarity was the chair for MCAG. And I got it wrong. Pass check is the vice chair. So just wanted to clear the air. Okay, that's it. And now we move on to Good and Welfare.
I'll just announce in advance here that the Building Community Initiative that started on February 5th is going to continue. And the next sort of big gathering is going to be March 19th. I'll announce it next time. But it's going to be 4:00 on Sunday, March 19th, at the Senior Center. And we're going to have focus groups on housing, health, local food and agriculture, building, or supporting the business community and youth slash senior support services. So basically, community members are going to be, you know, meeting to talk about how they can help all of these different community efforts. That'll be on, yeah.
All right. We have no closed session tonight. So with that, I will adjourn this meeting at 9:00.